Good afternoon, everyone. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Try one more time.
Good morning.
Oh, thank you all for joining us for this specially called meeting on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. I want to acknowledge one of our board members, Ms. Alexandra Valladolid is joining us via Zoom. Can you say hello, Ms. Valladolid?
Hello, everyone. This is Alexandra Valladolid joining remotely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and you see the rest of our board members are here. This meeting is now called to order. We'll get started with a moment of silence. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is agenda review and approval.
Move approval of the agenda as presented.
A second. Agenda has been moved. And second, any other discussion? We'll do a voice vote, since Ms. Valladolid is joining us virtually. I'll start with you, Ms. Valladolid.
I vote aye. This is Alexandra Valladolid, I vote aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Byer?
Aye.
Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The agenda passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda, the selection of District Three candidate. All of our candidates are here. Just want to say again, thank you all so much for taking the time to write and to interview and talk with us. I know you've engaged with many different community members and different groups, so really appreciate all of the effort that you put forth already and just wanting to fill this vacancy seat. We're gonna open the floor up for the board members to talk about who they think is their top choice, and then we will move forward.
Question, are we making nominations at this moment or just making comments?
We are making comments.
Okay.
Do you want to start, Ms. Valladolid? Or you want to? I just want to make sure I acknowledge, you let me know when you want to go, since you're not.
No, no, just just wanted to check if it was comments. I just want to know how the nominations, the process for the nominations, I'm interested in knowing because I don't have a buzzer, which would make the time of who buzzes first a consideration. So I just wanted to make sure we were just doing comments before we got into the nominations and that you would explain a little bit more about how the nomination process would go about. Thank you so much, Chair Bettina.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. So I will open the floor for comments first, and then I'll come back and ask for a nomination, so that way it'll flow a little bit better. And then we will... Ms. Valladolid, if you have a nomination, just let me know, and I can start with you to make sure we get you covered.
Yeah, I do have a nomination for Mr. Kevin Primus, so I'm just gonna put that on the floor if it's a good time to do so.
Can I ask you to hold that for us to have the comments first and then go to the nomination?
Yes, yes, of course, yes.
Thank you. All right, so I'll make sure I come to you. All right, I'll open the floor for any board member to begin.
Need people to start? Okay. I'm not shy. Thank you all so much for letting me start. I appreciate it. It is a humbling task to serve an elected office. It is both energizing and exhausting. It is imperative to deeply engage the Durham community on systemic inequities honestly and authentically. The vast majority of systemic concerns must be addressed with more progressive legislation at the state and federal level. In Durham, we will continue bringing people together to find local solutions with our local resources to address these systemic issues, whether in education, housing, justice, food security, healthcare, and all other spaces. In Durham Public Schools, we are an equity-focused district, working with students, educators, families, and community members to ignite the limitless potential of our future leaders. This is our ongoing core daily work grounded in our strategic plan, and this board is united and unanimous in that focus. I'm so thankful for all four passionate community members who stepped up, willing to serve, and fill the District Three vacancy. You are all qualified, have a heart for equity in the Durham community, and you bring unique strengths and perspectives. In previous board vacancies, I thoughtfully considered twenty-two qualified applicants and voted to appoint Chair Bettina Umstead and Mr. Fred Raven. Our task today as a board is to thoughtfully and umbly select a representative on behalf of the residents of District Three to serve until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. After thoughtful consideration, I support Jessica Carter-Autton. Jessica is ready to work with the board at this time. This board at this time. She is a public health professional, a mother, a PTA volunteer, and an equity advocate. She will collaborate thoughtfully and impartially with every board colleague and govern the superintendent fairly. She is poised to advocate for equity while building positive relationships with principals, district staff, educators, and elected officials, including the Durham County Commissioners. She is fully committed to raising her children within Durham Public Schools and having challenging community conversations as we work to increase enrollment through the Growing Together Initiative. Jessica brings a spirit of listening to learn, digging into evidence-based practices, and a willingness to ask thoughtful questions. Like her predecessor, she is fluent in Spanish and able to engage in conversations while building support for language justice. As a liquid parent, she is committed to the community schools model, which is some of Durham's most transformative equity work. I look forward to welcoming Jessica Carter-Autton to join this board in service to all of Durham. Thank you.
Well, that was a nice, I'm glad you went first, because that was an introduction to the role in general, and I didn't have that prepared, so that's great. I also want to thank each of you so much for your energy and for all that you have done for the schools already and for students. It is, it takes a lot to go through this process, and and so we just greatly appreciate it, and we've had many thoughtful conversations this week and last week and probably the week before that. So so I very much appreciate everything that you all have contributed. I I support, after thoughtful consideration, Jessica Carter-Autton for this role. My reasons are the data-driven approach that I think is so important as we make decisions in our work and in some cases, you know, call for deeper dives into disaggregated data. And I think she is thoughtful about the issues we are facing, growing together, which will be over the course of the next several years, addressing mental health needs of students and their relationship to safety in our schools, retaining families more generally, and encouraging families to choose DPS and closing the achievement gas, achievement or the gap in achievement outcomes before, between our white students and our students of color, which was the first and foremost issue that she named and is also the biggest goal I have for my term as well. And I believe that she has the skill set to do this as a board member. I appreciated that she reached out to each of the board members. I think a few of us knew her and maybe the majority of us did not, so appreciated that that opportunity to to speak and and find out more through a one-on-one conversation, what some of her goals and values were. And I think particularly at this time, I have shared this, that our relationship building is of central importance to me between this board and with the administration, and I think her experience indicates her work in this area as well. I appreciate her background in public health research, and I think it'll be an asset as she is attentive to critical issues that affect the context of our students. And I also appreciated that she was reflective about her own identity and positionality, in particular, her whiteness. And lastly, just I appreciated the vision she had for a public education as the foundation of a democratic society and seeing our, the institution that we serve and that we are a part of in the in the larger political and social context. So for those reasons, I have chosen to support Jessica Carter-Autton for this role. And again, I thank everybody so much for your for your energy and and willingness to serve in this capacity. Thank you.
I echo, I echo the same sentiments as my colleagues, that you all have had courage to apply to this role, and I want to acknowledge and appreciate you all for that, for your desire to serve Durham Public Schools. Every one of you had amazing applications, thoughtful contributions for this board. I just want to acknowledge that and appreciate you all for being here and for the courage that that takes. I would like to support a former educator and community activist, Kevin Primus. It is difficult being an activist to serving on a school board when people consider advocacy with a negative connotation. When I see Kevin Primus, it's someone who desires transparency and accountability and always presents it a respectful way for those matters. As I had further conversation with him on this in particular, and as he had answered the DAE questionnaire, that he definitely understands the difference between governance and managing, but there also needs to be a place of openness, transparency, and accountability for the community, and he squarely stands in that space. What I've heard and learned from him is that he is data-driven. He's talked about the metrics referring to the metrics for data around trauma-informed training. He also talked about the metrics regarding exceptional children in English language learner support services. Finally, when we had our one-on-one discussion, he talked about the metrics to assure data collection around evaluations to help access program outcomes and effectiveness and personnel performance, again, showing the difference between governance and managing. He's shown himself to be systems-oriented and having a keen eye and laser focus on how to give and get the best for all of our students. When it comes to engagement and community, he squarely talked about those efforts and has lived experiences and understanding of the complexities. As much as I appreciate hearing about the other applicants and what you would do, what I already see is what Kevin is already doing. He would be an asset to our board because of his experience and commitment. And when bringing an equity lens to this conversation, he brings the perspective of a male voice and being a black man where representation matters. With all of this, it takes nothing away from our other candidates. Very qualified candidates who have been courageous to submit an application and to be here right now, and I can work with any one of you. I want to be very honest and clear about that. What Durham needs right now and our board needs right now is the opportunity to appoint someone in a seat, and it would be Kevin Primus, in my humble opinion. Quoting one of our constituents who sent an email, "I urge you to reconsider your assumptions on this appointment, see past friendships and influence, and see the body of work Kevin Primus has done and the amount of compassion and concern he has in his heart for the children of Durham Public Schools." This is what I've gotten to know about him in this process and why I would support his application.
Ms. Valladolid, I want to make sure you have an opportunity to share as well. Are you ready?
Yes, I can go now, unless my colleague Millicent, I'm not there to see faces or anything, so I just want to make sure.
She said, she said you can go ahead.
She said I can go ahead, okay. Well, I must say that, you know, we are in a very unique position here to have to choose somebody in the community and not have that option, right? Because we are doing an appointment process versus an election process when obviously the ballot would be a very tangible way, right, of the community choosing a representative. This is a choice that we have. We have a unique opportunity to make a choice, and so we have a process. And I thank all of you for going through that process. Your statements, you know, your letters of recommendation, you know, filling out the questionnaires, everything has given us a vista into the things that you care about, and I am so grateful that all of you named very important things that you're all aligned with equity. In this moment, every single day, we have children in DPS that are calling out for help. And the call for help is not sometimes spelled out with H-E-L-P. It's the things that we're seeing. We're in a crisis. There are many, many boys, black boys, Latino boys. We have many, many different names on a quilt. And it just breaks my heart because I know that, you know, we can be all about exploring the data after the fact, and we're very good at saying that we see the research. We have some of the best administrators in DPS. Dr. Al Royster, we have Dr. Maddox Perry. Everybody in DPS is versed in research, so that is a baseline. That should not be the cutting edge. I mean, everybody here is versed in research. Many of us have many, many different papers that we've written. Many, many of us have, maybe not all of us, but I'll tell you this, research is not the thing that is going to save a child's life. The research is going to tell us what's wrong. It may lead and it may point to interventions, but decision-making, actual stake in the results, actual involvement in communities, actual relationships. When I look at a letter that has been signed by a broad constituency, constituency across Durham, multiple intersectionality is in that list because it's so many different folks, many different races, orientations, many different organizations that they, that these community members are engaged in. It speaks highly. It speaks highly. And when I looked also in the questionnaire and I compared the questionnaire, what is the breadth of the network? What do each, what does each candidate bring? And again, I'm very touched because every single application lists, you know, who are those folks who are involved and who are considered mentors or considered voices of experience, but I'm telling you that I have seen firsthand the relations, the relationships when I think about health, when I think about mental health, when I think about us coming from a pandemic and Mr. Primus having connections to the Mayo Clinic in Jacksonville, Florida, and being a part of that. It's a broad list. It's the Mayo Clinic doing some good research, some case studies. You know, deciding how to how to approach problems, how to arrive at decisions, what kind of interventions. I also know that there are folks in his, in what he submitted in his questionnaire that are in California, Georgia Tech, many different institutions and many different, I mean, it's a, it's a broad, it's a broad list. When I think about all the folks, including Dr. Gary May, who's the former dean of engineering at Georgia Tech, current chancellor of UC Davis. When it comes to Hispanic bilingual education, Janice Ramírez, Janice, who helped us, who reached out to our board, and I worked with her. Bettina may remember this, but we met with Janice to pass a resolution in support of English language learners. English is my second language. English language learners. I mean, this is, this is, this is somebody who Kevin has been in relationship with, has worked with, and who he has definitely been consulting with about these things. He knows, you know, he has a broad network, broad connections. I can go on, you know, his Duke professor, right? So don't, I want to be very clear about this. The cutting edge, research connections, great. But what, what is the level of accountability, right? At this moment, we have a crisis. We have kids that are dying. Just yesterday, another child was shot. I got some news pretty directly from the community about the things that happened. Another young adult, another young person shot. And it's not at the back end where you started exploring the research and talking about, you know, the people who are already in the criminal justice system, maybe serving time. It's right now. It's the math counts. It's the interventions. It's the ways that we can continue to put a focus on the kids. And Mr. Primus has direct connection, direct work. As a teacher, as a former teacher, as somebody who, you know, is very versed in podcasts, is very versed in an example that I have is one of the kids who got shot, who he offered in, in this child, had a conversation with him. I was very present. I was, I was present with the child, and on the phone was Mr. Primus, and he was just sharing about how he nearly died. You know, how he's recovering, how he's gonna have to live, live life as a blind young man. And this child definitely was just sharing his story, but also, you know, the ability for somebody to engage our youth. That's who we need. And I'm not taking away from any candidate who wants to be in office, but this is the time and the urgency of the time. We need somebody with direct relationships. We need somebody who's ready to hit the ground running. We need somebody who not only speaks Spanish, but can actually relate to the Latino community in ways that will reach these kids, reach these families. When I hear from Latino moms who said, "He went to court with me. He accompanied me to court." You know, he was there when I needed this. That, to me, is important. You know, it's also very important for me to say that the decisions that we make as a board, we can make our own decision, but we're accountable to a community who elected us. Every single one of our seats. Whether we were appointed at one time, but then we had to run for office, every single one of our seats is accountable to a community in Durham. Our decisions cannot be devoid of the community presence and the community voice. And so tonight, I am supporting Mr. Kevin Primus. I have talked to our chair. I have talked to our board. I have talked to numerous, whether it's the legal situations and all that. We have navigated conflict of interests. We have navigated everything. I'm putting this out there because this is all the work that it takes for me to stand here and tell you that I support Mr. Kevin Primus. And I'm honored that there's nothing precluding my ability to support Mr. Kevin Primus and that his work speaks for itself. He did the lift for community schools at a time when both my work, the work that he did, many folks had to lift this. And now people can glory and say, "Oh, I support community schools," but where were you when the lift was being done? The big lift. The big lift, the one that took actually doing a pilot without district support at that moment. The one that took talking to county commissioners, when the county commission hadn't yet given them money. How do you think they gave them money? It took broad support. Some of us have been erased from, you know, the list. Some of us have been, our work has been erased. But you know what? The work speaks for itself. Mr. Kevin Primus went out to bat. He came out to a love picnic, one of many that I did at Club Boulevard at the Northgate Park, and he was all about community schools, championing it, trying to meet, connecting with many folks. And I have, I have folks complain about the the, the, the levels of engagement and the levels of how we throw in Durham, but that's the Durham way. We throw in all the way. And I thank everyone for applying. I think everyone for going for this seat, but I will just say that we are in a crisis right now. Youth, our youth, need to see themselves reflected in leadership. Black youth specifically. Dr. Al Racer shared a presentation. Those numbers, black boys, black boys lead the way in ways that they could lead it, and they have the opportunity, we have the opportunity to change things for black boys. And our ability to make decisions with community is is very important. So I will say that my support today comes not only as Alexandra's support, but the support of the many names, and I can throw out so many names. But you can see on that list, I think Muffin, I think so many folks in the community who work with our youth, who, you know, signed this letter, Dr. Rhonda Taylor-Bullock. I could go on. I mean, I can, I can list all the names. People who work with our youth, people who know what's at stake. People who know that the time is running out, and we cannot have another one. Yesterday, there was a shooting that took the life of a young man, and some of you may not know about it. I know about it. So we need to continue. We need to continue this work. We need to do it together. I will also say that the candidate, it seems like right now there's two candidates that have been nominated. I do appreciate Ms. Jessica Carter-Autton realizing after the fact, she did not shake my hand. She did not make that personal connection at the interview time. I stayed there and I stood there and I talked to both Nicole Smith and Natalie Byer, and I said to both of them, I said, I stood like a statue. There was a lot of conversation, and I understand that time, you know, is a factor. People want to go home. But I stood there trying to make eye contact, trying to make sure. And then I walked to the dais, and then I remember, and I can't see Ms. Day's face right now, but I do want to thank you because you, you came to the dais and you said, you realized, like, you know, that that would have been a mishap to not shake one of the board members' hands, to not make that connection. I mean, we can make paper connection and email connection all day long, but you came back, Ms. Day, and you said, "I didn't want to leave without shaking your hand." And I thank you so much for that because that is awareness. You know, at the end of the day, many of our kids feel disregarded like that. Many families feel disregarded. They feel invisibilized like that. Ms. Jessica, you did not shake my hand. You did not make that personal, in-person connection at the interview, but you sent me an email. And we had talked about the fact that my desire is to engage folks in person, but in community events, and there's a reason for that. Because we're all about community right now. It's not about political. We don't have time for these political games. Durham, we don't have time for political games. Children's lives are at stake. I want to see you in community events. I wanted to see what does it look like to engage at a board meeting? These are the places where decisions are made and conversations, meaningful conversations happen in community. We didn't get that opportunity. But, you know, I just, I just want to say my support comes with a lot of consideration. It comes with legal checks. It comes with all the things, and it comes with the integrity that, that the professionalism that I've seen Mr. Primus exhibit, where I do know that he will do a good job. There is no concern about any impropriety or anything because I know that, I know the integrity with which he works. I know the integrity of this board as well, which is one that we all protect and we all uphold. And so my support is for Mr. Kevin Primus tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valladolid.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing? Thanks for being here. Thank you for putting yourselves forward in this way. It's gotta be tough to do this, to do such a thing when there are... Am I close enough? Can y'all hear me? Okay. When there's nobody else doing it with you. You're not running with somebody. There's nobody else running for office right now. You are applying and putting yourself in the forefront. I appreciate each of you for doing that. It takes a lot of work and a lot of courage. We've heard a lot from the community about what they want in this seat, and I'm very appreciative of every community member that has shared. Of every community member that has shared their position with us. I love Durham. Very much and all the people in it. And I recognize that I have that. There's so much respect for people and love for people and care for people and that we have to show respect to everybody. Even if they don't demonstrate that same love and care and respect towards us. We have to honor that. And so as I have been a part of the political world for a while and an advocate. And a part of the community, I've learned and spoken with a lot of people and love and respect a lot of people. And so my statement comes from that place of love and care. As I was working through this work, I remembered something that Dr. Rhonda Taylor Bullock wrote a little over two years ago. You carry all of your identities with you every time you take up space. Demographics matter, representation matters, and we all have a variety of identities with us everywhere we go. Tonight, I'm a board member, but I didn't stop being a black woman. Nor did I stop being the mother to a black son who has had a variety of challenges during his time in DPS. I tracked the bus on Edgelog, check Power School and go to parent-teacher conferences just like every other parent. I'm all the things you see on paper, but I'm also a lot more than that. I'm certain demographics, but I'm also an independent thinker. Passionate about student equity and totally willing to make the choice I think is best, even when it's unexpected or unpopular. Tonight, I'll lend my support for District Three vacancy to Jessica Carter Otten. Qualifications are important, demographics are important, but values are important too. As always, I'm making the choice that I think is best for our students. I'm extremely appreciative of the fact that my black son, who is a bubble student, can see teachers like Dr. Carter, Carter. Principals like Doctors Lanier and Logan and DPS leaders like Dr. Dana Morrison, Dr. Monk, Dr. Bullock and Dr. Mubanga. We hear them, we see them, and we lean on them to advise us on best practices for all of our students. But most especially for our black boys. We will do everything within our abilities as a body to move forward the work of our district. We will not always be unanimous. But we will move with kindness and respect towards each other and eat every single person in our community. As the elected representative for Consolidated District B, I'm impressed with Jessica Carter Otten. Because she has the relationships that will be able to help us move forward and navigate and growing together. And connect with the community and use research-based techniques to help us move forward on eliminating. The school-to-prison pipeline in Durham and ensure we collectively address health issues that impact our students. Because of her data-driven work in public health. I appreciate her willingness to step up and support our board and community in these ways. We don't have to agree, but I do think it's important that we all remember people we disagree with are just that people. I'm grateful. For each of the people who have taken the time and energy in this application process. Each and every one of you. I've worked with the women sitting next to me long enough to know that they'll do the same. And I extend my gratitude to each of you for putting yourselves forward.
So much has been said already tonight, much of which I I wanted to talk about in my own notes. Um I sat where you were in 2016, so I was bringing back my own memories of what it was like to apply for this seat. Um so I can feel your nerves and understand where you are and then appreciate again the vulnerability to put yourself forward. Um since I have served on this board since 2016, I think about we have. A lot of urgent needs that have been named, a lot of things that we need to work on. To make sure that every kid in Durham has a great education, that educators have a great place to work. And that our schools are a place that our community can be proud of. And I think in order to get to that end goal, that igniting this limitless potential that we talk about. We need listeners, we need collaborators, we need people who are thoughtful and engaging, who understand the macro and the micro politics. Who are able to listen and understand multiple perspectives, who are able to come to the table with experience working across difference. And that when they disagree, they're able to commit and still move forward in community. That's such a vital part of our work as board members to be able to work forward as a community. And I think this is what we need because I know our students and our educators and our families demand it from us every day to get to that end goal. I do believe that Jessica Carter Otten has that experience to support our work that we need moving forward. I want to be clear that we're always here and I will speak for myself as well as our board to listen. And to analyze and to consider the thoughtful questions that you always bring to us, Mr. Primus. And the other ways that you all have engaged with us, even during your interviews, how can we improve processes for when parents need to share concerns? Or make sure that educators feel that we care for them, even though we also know that we need to work on our test scores, right? For our students, make sure they're learning and growing. There's a lot that we've learned through this process. And there's a lot more learning that we need to continue to do. But I always come back to our students. And we need, what we need as a board moving forward to make sure we can be effective for them, for our educators and for our families. So. We have had, most people have, everyone has shared. I will open the floor formally now for a nomination. I nominate Jessica Carter Otten. Ms. Valdades, I want to make sure you get your.
Yeah, I nominate Kevin Primus, but what is the order?
Yeah, you want to know the order in which we'll vote?
Yeah.
Okay, we can also flip a coin again. Ms. Murchison is back as our attorney for this evening. Um so I'll grab her so we can do the flip coin and then we'll, that'll determine the order that we'll vote. Um Ms. Carter Otten, Mr. Primus, you all will determine what side you want, so you decide ahead or to. So Ms. Carter Otten picked heads, Mr. Primus fixed tails. It is heads. Tails, excuse me, I'm sorry. Tails, Ms. Murchison, so we will start with uh Mr. Primus. I'll start with Ms. Valdades.
Do I make, so the motion, I make the motion to nominate Kevin Primus and I vote aye.
So we have to, uh in the nomination process, we don't need a second. We just have two nominations for two candidates. Um and so you will vote now on Kevin Primus, Ms. Valdades.
This is Alexandra Valladares and I vote aye.
Um Ms. Rogers?
No.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Uh Ms. Byer?
No.
Uh Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
And I vote no as well, so that nomination does not carry. The second nomination is for Ms. Jessica Carter Arton. I'll start with Ms. Valdades.
I vote no.
Uh Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Ms. Byer?
Aye.
Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that nomination carries. Ms. Jessica Carter Otten, you have been selected by this board to fill our District Three vacancy. Thank you again to all of our applicants for your work. We look forward to working with you, Ms. Carter Otten. And with that, we are adjourned.